Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome to the Tuesday, February 20th, meeting of the Board of Aldermen. Our first order of business is minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll move for the approval.
All right, we have a motion to approve. It has been seconded. Is there any discussion or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we'll move on to public comment, where members of the public are invited to address the board on matters not on the agenda. Just based on some recent things that have happened in public comment, I'll just say, these are broadcast on PEG TV. PEG TV is subject to FCC regulations, so please refrain from using any profanity or obscenity, because it can result in PEG TV being fined, and then these meetings would no longer be broadcast and available live to the public. So feel free to raise your hand if you'd like to speak. Step up to the podium and just state your name and your city or town of residence, if you would. Go right ahead, sir. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Board. My name is Richard Spersky, Jr., resident of Three Butterfly Avenue here in the city. I'm here tonight with the support of many of my neighbors seated here to voice our opposition to the proposed indoor marijuana-growing operation slated for 82 East Washington Street. I have a petition here signed by 57 residents of the area, some who couldn't be here tonight. And I'd like to read what our petition states. "We, the undersigned, are residents of the City of Rutland, Vermont residing in Ward Two, Christ the King, Killington Avenue. We are aware that the city zoning administrator is in the process of granting a permit to Frederick Watkins to operate an indoor marijuana-growing operation at 82 East Washington Street. This property is a corner lot adjoining Butterfly Avenue. We vehemently oppose the approval of this permit, as this activity is not in keeping with the integrity of our neighborhood's single-family residential setting. We further assert this operation will generate noise, odor, and hourly activity which violates the standards of the home occupation ordinance. We request the issuance of this permit be halted until such time as a hearing on this matter can be had." Just a little bit of information as well. This proposed building is 100 feet away from the corner of Ronaldo Court, which is the home to two Rutland City school bus stops that host two stops twice a day. Four times, children are going to be getting off the bus and in direct line of sight to this building. So whatever activity they observe is going to be forming their long-term memories. It's also 500 feet away from the Green Mountain Missionary Baptist Church, which is in the neighborhood, and half a mile away from Christ the King School. So our belief is that a single-family residence is not the neighborhood for this location of this type of business. And we ask that you listen to our concerns, have the conversation, and determine if this business is in the best interests of the city and the local neighborhoods.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So what I've been told by the zoning administrator is that this issue will be going before the Development Review Board after the appeal period closes on February 29th. So that would be an important meeting to go to and voice these concerns there as well.
Is it automatically be sending to that? Because it's my understanding that as an appellate, you have to pay what you heard?
I believe there is a fee to file an...
You want me to...
Yes.
Okay.
If the zoning administrator is here, and he is the expert on these things.
So an appeal, we have all of them.
Should've sat closer.
Okay, so in order for it to go to the Development Review Board, there does have to be an appeal by at least someone. So how the appeal process works is during the 15-day appeal period, which we are currently in, it ends on February 29th. Should someone issue an appeal, then we have 60 days to schedule that hearing. Tentatively, I'm assuming that someone will appeal, so I've slated that for sometime in mid-April, I think April 17th, which falls on the third Wednesday in April. Should no one appeal, then the permit goes into effect immediately, and at that point, there's no appeal rights going forward. So one other thing to mention is that it's typically recommended that if there's going to be multiple people appealing, that you might want to speak to an attorney, because at points during the appeal process, you could have different legal interests and rights. Doesn't mean that you have to speak to an attorney, but it is just recommended. So otherwise, you know, you can... Any other questions can be directed towards me, or Michelle, who is our office coordinator in the department, or Luke, who is the Assistant Zoning Administrator.
Thank you. Alderman Gillum?
I just wanted to ask a question to you.
Yeah.
But this petition, is that considered an appeal?
If... They have to file... There are certain legal parameters, which I've outlined in an email, which if you get your email address or you contact our office, I can get you those criteria. But under state statute, I believe there's like six criteria that you have to answer, and it has to be filed with the city clerk. If it does get filed with our office, I will make sure that it gets downstairs to fulfill that requirement. And then, once that happens and the appeal period ends, those appeals will be delivered to our office, where we will begin the appeal process. In regards to your question specifically, it would be best probably to make it known that each one of these people that have signed the petition are interested joining the appeal, whether that's in a joint application, or each one of them can file separately. If they do file separately, there is a $150 application fee. So that's also something to be weighing.
So you're saying they can file together?
They could file jointly.
So it's one fee for everybody?
Would be one fee for everyone, but as I mentioned earlier, during the appeal process, especially if this goes up to the environmental court, you could have diverging legal interests, and that's something that each resident should just be aware of, and that's why we recommend reaching out to an attorney.
Thank you.
So if I may, Mr. Davis?
I think the issue, too, is this will file under what's known as a home occupation, which I think, spoken to the city attorney, whether or not this board feels that that is a home occupation. So I think that discussion should be had, because we may see more of these in residential neighborhoods. And do we want to see these in a residential neighborhood? That's our tax base. So I'd like to refer the issue of home occupation, and whether or not this fits that criteria to the Charter and Ordinance Committee.
All right, so we have a motion to refer discussion of home occupations to the Charter and Ordinance Committee. It has been seconded. Alderman McCann?
Thank you. I'm wondering if the zoning administrator could tell us how this would relate to the updated zoning bylaws that are being worked on? Is this something that could potentially be restricted or defined by that process?
It will probably take a little bit more legal research. So basically, how we got to this point is that a home occupation is kind of blind to what the use is itself. You're more looking at the impact to the neighborhood in terms of what that business is. So if you were to take cannabis out of this specific picture and substitute it with some type of greenhouse operation, you know, the context, well, you know, different ramifications and, you know, rabbit holes. But, you know, the context itself is growing some sort of crop, right? So you're kind of looking at home occupations blindly and seeing what the impact of the neighborhood is in terms of traffic, hours of operation, how many people are coming and going from the site, and, you know, is there stuff on the property that's going to be aesthetically displeasing? In terms of home occupations itself, under state statute, it does say wherever you have a single-family dwelling, you're allowed to have a home business or home occupation. And then, some municipalities have gone further in delineating a home occupation from a home business, which we will be doing in the new regs. It's just what are those criteria from when it becomes a home occupation, where I can permit it versus a home business, where it might require the Development Review Board to look at it further? So to answer your question, yes, it will be in the regs in terms of whether you could stop something as controversial as cannabis, weed, versus any other type of business. I'm not quite sure, and that will probably take more research.
Yeah. Mr. Spersky, does that answer your question about the process? I just wanted to make sure that...
Yeah, it does. Where is the second question, right? We'll speak on that.
Yes, absolutely.
So my understanding about cannabis is that it's a controlled substance. There's controlled access, not people can't come and go as they... at will. I don't know of too many home-based occup... or home businesses that have those standards. And, you know, you're talking home businesses being beauty salons, dog grooming, pottery, things of that nature. So I understand the products from the process, but if something is such highly controlled, it doesn't seem like it's a home occupation. It seems it's a commercial venture with high standards.
Yeah, I think you've raised some important concerns. This is new territory for the City of Rutland. Alderman McClure?
I would just like to state, I do have a familial relation to the individual being discussed this evening, so when a vote does come to send this to Charter and Ordinance, I will be recusing myself. However, I do support this matter going to Charter and Ordinance for further discussion. As you stated, it is uncharted territory, uncharted waters for the city.
Very good. Thank you for letting us know.
I lost my train of thought, but I have no other...
Are there other... Are there other questions from the board? Alderman Hooker?
Just a clarification, that the permit process will continue despite the fact that the question has been sent to Charter and Ordinance about home occupations.
Yeah, and I would just further clarify that the permit has been issued. It was issued, I think, Thursday or Friday last week, so the appeal date is intentionally scheduled... Well, not intentionally, but I made sure it was fall... would fall during the business week. Business... A business day during the week. So Friday, February, Thursday, whenever 29th is.
Alderman Savage?
Are there laws at the state level that say that permitting and things like that, and licensing that has to happen at the state level to say that growing can happen, or something? Does the permitting come before that? I mean, how... What's the procedure? Is all of that at the state level in mind?
Yeah, so it can happen simultaneously. There's not one before the other. You know, to give a couple of examples, when someone's doing an Act 250 review, they usually do their municipal review first, because by the time it gets to the state, you know, they're a little bit more in-depth and have more comments than what the municipality will do, and part of their criteria requires them to go to the municipality first. Another example, and this is really where, you know, state law and municipal law deviate. So Rutland City has no regulations in terms of wetlands, but the state does. So someone in the city could come and decide to build right in a wetland, and I can issue that permit. We have no regulation saying that I can't. But the state will have issues if they build right in a... Build right in a wetland. So this is one of those cases where the applicant could very well go through the licensing process with the state and could get a no, but as far as the home business is concerned, I have determined that it has met the home business standards under our regs.
Alderman Kupali?
Yeah, Andrew, how many home businesses are permitted on one property?
There's no limit as to how many home businesses can be permitted on a property, at least under our current regs. That would probably take more research on whether we can limit home occupations on a property. So, yeah, right now, there's no limit to how many you can have.
I'm just considering, if I may?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just considering the, you know, again, if it were a traffic issue or equipment issues that were being generated from these businesses that are already existing there?
Yeah.
That would be my... A concern of mine as well.
Yeah, and I mean, this is probably, you know, I would say most zoning regs aren't prepared to tackle multiple home occupations on a property. It's just something you don't really see very often, because, you know, when you have a home occupation, you're likely going to be registering with the state as a business under... And incorporating in somehow. So, you know, there's costs associated with having multiple businesses and running multiple operations out of one property. So I think, you know, based on my experience, I imagine, right, from what I've seen, zoning regs just aren't really fit to tackle multiple home businesses on one lot.
Any further questions from the board? Are there other members of the public who wish to speak to this issue? Oh, sorry. I apologize. Before you speak, we have a motion on the floor to refer this to Charter and Ordinance. It has been seconded. If there's no further discussion on the referral, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Sir?
Hi. My name is Harold Brookman. They call me Sam. I live at 66 East Washington Street. My concern is that I have right now, you say it's got to go before the zoning review board. Is the permit going to stop any more movement forward with the construction of that facility until all permits have been granted?
That's a very good question. Administrator Srinisty, can you answer that question?
I can. So the home business permit is a separate permit from the construction of the accessory structure. So he... The applicant there did receive approval for that accessory structure back towards the end of late December. So, you know, whatever outcome in terms of the home business is, the structure itself is still permitted and approved.
I understand that the building's going to stay. I don't care about the building. I care about what the product that's going to be in the building. I'm asking you, are you going to allow them... Him to develop that into this growing area before he has all the right permits? You're doing us an injustice by doing that, and him also. He's going to invest a lot of money in this. And if his permit is rejected at the state level, say it gets that far, or whatever's going to happen, who's at fault for this? Not us. So we'll be looking for you and anybody else that wants to agree to this without really telling this guy to go ahead and finish what you started. You know, it's not fair to him, not fair to the residents.
I mean, I do believe that building and zoning is limited in what they can do, certainly. Alderman Davis?
Just a question, Andrew, if I may, please. So if and when an appeal is filed, I would assume there's like a cease and desist until the hearing occurs, a decision is made, et cetera, et cetera?
Normally, when an appeal happens, I believe it's kind of acts as like a halting point if... Megan, do you believe... Yeah, so it kind of stays the application until there's a resolution on it. So, you know, it's tough, you know, in terms of permitting, because there's multiple layers here, and when there are state permits and licensing involved, people try to do it simultaneously, so that way, when they get to the final point, you know, they're ready to go. But it... There is... Sometimes you run into these situations where one agency denies it, and then you are out cost.
Alderman Gillum?
Has the state gave them the manufacturer license yet for cannabis?
To my knowledge, there is a hearing scheduled for the 29th for them.
So they have not been awarded that license yet?
I believe that's correct.
Does the neighbors have the appeal process to that state process?
That would be a question for the state agency that overruns that licensing process. I'm not quite sure.
So if I can summarize what I'm hearing, just so others... So it makes sense to others. If an appeal is filed before the 29th, work would halt on the development of the home business. Development of the accessory structure can continue.
Yes. So, yeah, and I mean, that's a little bit of a, you know, fine line in terms of what's considered part of the home business versus what's considered the accessory structure.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any other members? Alderman Gillum, and then...
I want to make sure the neighbors know that the board... This board can't do anything about your situation. They're going to have to work through that process and that system, and I suggest that you do file an appeal. And then look into the state cannabis process.
I'm Joseph Roy. I live at 81 Killington Avenue. I've lived there for 70 years. So I know the area pretty good. This isn't something that we really want in our neighborhood, and I'm surprised that the board doesn't have more power over this to do something about this. But hopefully, we can get together here and do something. Once you open this box up, it can go into any neighborhood then. So it's really a sad situation that we're going to let this happen, if it does happen. The other point I want to make is I heard on Channel 3 News a couple of weeks ago that our friends up in Montpelier were thinking of making it legal for wholesale marijuana places to sell to the public. And if they do that, that's just opening another whole big door going down to East Washington Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to address the board on this issue? Seeing none? Thank you all for coming tonight and, you know, for organizing on this issue. We do appreciate hearing from you. Are there other members of the public? Well, I'll let those of you who wish to leave file out, and then we'll continue with public comment. All right. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the board on items not on our agenda this evening? Seeing none? We'll move on to communications from the mayor.
Good evening. So I'm going to read a little. I wrote a couple of things down, and as my first year as mayor draws to a close, I believe it's kind of important to reflect on the last 12 months. I'm going to go month by month, item by item. It's probably going to take about 35 to 40... No, just kidding. I was waiting for your... In all seriousness, this year presented us both with challenges and some successes. One of the most poignant challenges was the loss of Police Officer Jessica Ebenhausen, a dedicated member of our community who worked for our police department and was actually a city employee as well in that regard. However, amidst the grief of this incident, our community rallied together to support Jessica's family, our entire police department, and the community itself. Additionally, addressing our public safety concerns has been a priority. Our voices were heard by state leadership, resulting in action from the governor's office and discussion on statewide measures in the legislature to enhance public safety and ensure accountability. Rutland's proactive stance in these discussions demonstrates our commitment to positive change, and I extend my gratitude to our community for speaking up and for their support. While we, as longtime residents, may be familiar with the various aspects of our city, including those challenges, I take pride in the perspective of newcomers and visitors. Recently, I had the pleasure of conversing with individuals who praise Rutland's charm, accessibility, outdoor activities like skiing, and the scenic views from our downtown area. Several weeks ago, I spoke with a visitor to our city. They were here on a ski trip. They were shopping in our downtown. They had stopped for barbecue on Woodstock Ave, ventured downtown for some afternoon time, and then they were off to go bowling with their family in the evening. They raved about what a wonderful city we had, so close to the mountains, with such amazing views for our downtown. Just this weekend, while out walking, I chatted with a new resident who was out shoveling her driveway. Her and her family moved to Rutland City this past August, selling their house down south and moving here to our city. They're excited about the beauty, the opportunity, and the affordability of our community. Yes, Rutland, to many people from not around here, is very affordable. They chose to live here, working remotely, because of how welcoming our city felt to them. I'm proud to hear that. I'm excited to know that our community is appealing to those who have choices of where to live and where to call home. I want to thank our city departments. DPW, keeping our streets and systems working. The Rec Department for providing amazing facilities and programming and services for both our youth and seniors, as well as many others. Phenomenal customer service that we see in our treasures and clerks' offices and the efficiencies that they work with, despite the heavy load they have on their shoulders every day. Our building, zoning, and assessing departments are always working to make sure our residents have the tools that they need to succeed and live here in our city. And for our police and fire departments, who keep us safe, and for all those who work in the city, I want to say thank you. To all of those who work for our city, I want to say thank you. You know, I have department head meetings twice a month. We're actually moving that to once a month right now. We usually do it before Board of Aldermen meetings, and I get to say that to my department heads on occasion, and I don't get the opportunity to say it to all the employees. So I'm taking that opportunity to say thank you to everybody who works here. It's not just because you have made my first year here as smooth as possible, because they have, but because you and your efforts are what make this city such a comfortable and welcoming place to live for those residents and those visitors. I commend our city employees for their dedication during the budget season as well, where tough decisions were made to prioritize essential services while being as mindful as possible to taxpayer dollars. Furthermore, partnerships with organizations like Cedar, the RRA, Brock, the Housing Trust, have enabled us to address housing, development, and growth initiatives effectively. These collaborations extend our reach beyond City Hall, facilitating progress and reinvestment in our city of Rutland. While we're talking about partnerships, I want to take a moment to talk about something that so many residents bring up, and I cannot leave it unaddressed: a movie theater here in our city. Efforts are underway by a group of residents to explore potential locations and formulate plans. We've had conversations. They've come to me. They're active. They're working hard, and it's something that citizens of the city are actually taking an active participation in, and that partnership is fantastic. I'm optimistic about the prospects that that partnership will bring, and I look forward to seeing the results. In the meantime, the desire for the ability to sit down and see a movie in our city still remains strong. So, in another partnership with the Paramount Theater, I'd like to announce that we'll be hosting a monthly Rutland City Movie Night, catering to audiences of all ages. The first event will be held on March 23rd, which is Saturday. We're going to split it up. We're going to actually have two movies a day. We're going to have one in the afternoon for kids and one in the evening for teens and adults. With further details to follow, I extend my gratitude to the Paramount Theater for their cooperation in making this initiative possible. We will post this on the website. We'll get out the word, but that'll be coming on March 23rd. Looking ahead to the upcoming election, I urge all eligible voters to participate, whether by casting their ballots in person or requesting absentee ballots. Your voice matters, and your vote is instrumental in shaping the future of our city. I've said this during my campaign, but it remains true as mayor. In Rutland City, we face a daily choice between growth and stagnation. Doing nothing is not an option. If we wish to thrive and evolve as a community, as I choose growth for our city, I hope that you do as well. I look forward to what's to come over the next year, and the best of luck to those of you who are running for reelection on March 5th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions from the board for the mayor? Seeing none? Oh, Alderman McClure?
Are we privy to what the double feature will be for the first movie night?
Details yet to come.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, moving on to additions and deletions to the agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions? We'll move the executive session to the end, but I don't need a motion to do that. Further additions or deletions? Seeing none? Move on to reports and letters from department heads and officials. First up, we have Barbara Spalding from the Rutland Redevelopment Authority with a request related to the Housing Trust of Rutland County's interest in applying to a Vermont Community Development Program Implementation Grant. There is info on pages 1 to 5 of your packet. Welcome, Barbara.
Thank you. Good evening. So as you may have remembered, we did apply to VCDP for funding for East Creek Commons. We did not receive that funding. At that time, it was for 22 units of housing. The ask was $1 million, and the total project budget was $11.5 million. This time, Housing Trust of Rutland County has flushed out some of the numbers, and they're going to be asking for less money, $500,000. The project budget did go up to $14 million, but the number of units will be 35. And some of those will be units for homeless veterans in Castleton. So the RRA met with Mary Cohen and Dan Caputo on February 13th to discuss their application, and the RRA board recommends that the city apply for the funding. Attached in your packet was the public hearing notice that is required. Attached in your packet was the public hearing notice that is required, and we are asking you to set a time for that public hearing on March 18th. And also refer to Community and Economic Development Committee so that you can meet with Mary and Dan and learn more about the project.
Alderwoman Taddeau?
Thank you for your work on this project. A motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
All right. We have a motion to suspend the rules. It has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I will move to set the public hearing for March 18th and then also to refer this issue to Community and Economic Development.
Did you have a time in mind for this?
Yes. So typically, we set them around 6:15, 6:30. I don't know how long they'll take. Or 6:45. I'm sorry, 6:30, 6:45.
6:45? Prior... We have a Board of Alderman meeting that evening? Correct. So...
So, I will move to set the public hearing March 16th at 6:45 p.m.
Second.
All right. So, we have a motion to set the public hearing for March 18th at 6:45 p.m. and refer the project to CED for further discussion. It has been seconded. Any debate?
Just a question.
Yeah. Alderwoman Davis.
Because we're out of town or in Castleton, which is new and different.
So, the meeting will be worn in Castleton as well. It'll be sent to their select board so that it can be posted in Castleton, and they'll be invited to come to the meeting if they so choose.
Okay. So, if I may?
Very good.
Just to follow. So, basically, we're just the passersby.
Yes.
Alderwoman Hooker?
This is a great opportunity that we're faced with now between the Rutland Housing Trust and the city to increase the number of units that we have available by rehabbing some that are already here and by adding more. So, a great partnership and just another example of the city working in partnership with another organization.
All right. Seeing no further discussion or questions, we have a motion to set the public hearing and to refer to CED. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
And you're up again with a request related to the Housing Trust's interest in applying for another VCDP grant, this time a planning grant. There's a memo and a copy of the application on pages 6 to 10 of your packet.
So, Mary Cohen and Dan Caputo also met with the RRA Board on the 13th of February to discuss a potential... a merger between NeighborWorks and the Housing Trust of Rutland County. And they are asking that the city apply for a $60,000 planning grant in the same round as the other project. And the RRA Board recommends that the city does apply for this funding. VCDP does allow a municipality to apply for both an implementation grant and a planning grant in the same round. And we will also require a public hearing. The notice was attached in your packet, same date for March 18th. And I would ask that you would set it for 6:30.
Very good. Alderwoman Taddeau?
Motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I would move to set the public hearing for March 18th at 6:30 and move to approve... send this to Community and Economic Development.
Second.
All right. So, we have a motion to set the public hearing for March 18th at 6:30 p.m. and refer the project to CED. Alderwoman McCann?
Thanks. Is there a match for this? We need to...
Yes. There's a 10% match that is being provided by Housing Trust.
Great. Thank you.
Any additional questions or discussion? Alderwoman Hooker?
I believe I have to recuse myself from this because I'm on the Board of NeighborWorks, but I just wanted to say that I think that this merger would enhance the abilities and the work of both organizations in offering affordable rental units and homeownership in the area.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And Barbara, you're up a third time with a request for a grant agreement resolution related to the Hospital Heights Rehab Project. There's a memo and copy of the resolution on pages 11 to 12 of your packet.
Thank you. Yes, I've been very busy. So, as you know, the city received a VCDP grant award of $900,000 to rehabilitate Hospital Heights at 101 Mahoney Avenue. The notice of release of funds for the environmental review process was received on November 30th. And the project asked for an enhancement of $50,000, which was awarded on February 7th. The grant agreement award conditions were met and submitted on February 9th. The RRA is asking the Board of Aldermen to circulate for signature Form PM-1, a resolution to accept and allow the mayor to sign the grant agreement offer in the amount of $950,000. The closing on the property is scheduled for tomorrow, and it's anticipated that work will commence in the spring.
Alderwoman McCann?
I'd make a motion that we circulate the...
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules?
Second.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And then I'd make a motion that we circulate for signature the Form PM-1, a resolution to accept and allow the mayor to sign the grant agreement offer as presented in the amount of $950,000.
Second.
All right. So, a motion to circulate the form for signatures and allow the mayor to sign the grant agreement. It has been seconded. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Zoning Administrator Strinasty with a request to approve an RFP for a consultant to assist in the development and preparation of a capital improvement program. There's a copy of the RFP on pages 13 to 17 of your packet. Welcome. Again.
Thank you. So, let's see. Last fall, we got... or actually, December, we were awarded a municipal planning grant through the Department of Housing and Community Development. We have, over the last month or so, put together an RFP to consult with a... to commission a consultant to help us develop a capital improvement program. So, I know this issue has found its way to the Finance Committee a couple of times, but this is the RFP that we're proposing to go out with, and I want to bring it to the Board for approval or comments.
So, I'll move to suspend the rules?
Second.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move for the approval of the RFP for the capital improvement program to seek requests for approvals.
Second. Second.
All right. So, we have a motion to approve the RFP, and it has been seconded. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Alderwoman Davis?
So, Andrew, when I read through your information here...
Yeah.
The only concern I had, and I don't know if this is just outlining it, it's not the way it's gonna function, but the Board is, if necessary, in Number 6.
Okay.
And my concern was the Board needs to be more than necessary and not Number 6 because we're spending a 1%. We're the elected officials who need to have some kind of input or approval or something as to how this money is spent.
Yep. So, that's where... and maybe I didn't outline it to the best of the ability, but let me get it up here so I can see what the timeline is.
I was on page 14.
14?
Yeah.
And did I cut it wrong?
So, it's just your second page?
Actually, it's your second page. Okay. My second page. Yes. Thank you for that. So, capital improvement programs have a hearing, and I didn't know, like, if that was the step where it's, you know, presented to you and the public, and at that point, that's when you would make the comment, like, final comments. There is the Capital Improvement Program Committee that we've assembled, and I was assuming that that would be a step where we kind of bring in the Board to provide more input, so not necessarily jumping from, you know, the Capital Improvement Program Committee where it's only five of us, making sure that we grab the Board and, you know, provide input and not going straight to the hearing after that. So, that's what I was thinking. And then, so, yes, there's typically a hearing for a capital improvement program prior to the budget process. So, there would be a public hearing for members of the public come in and comment on the capital improvement program. And I put, if necessary, for them to attend that meeting, depending on how the Board felt about the process up to that point. So...
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Alderwoman McCann? Did you have a...
Oh, yeah. Thank you. I was just gonna comment, so I know it's still in committee, and I think we just need to stress that, if I remember the discussion right, this timeline is pretty far out before we get sort of a product. So, we still want to come up with some sort of framework for ourselves to potentially use those funds between now and when we have that plan.
I would just, you know, echo that point and say that we do want to come up with criteria probably relatively soon. I don't know if that's before and after the election, but I do think it would be important to provide some parameters to assist the consultant. This is something that is going to be, you know, a fiscal year 2026 project. So, we still have time, but time goes fast.
Alderwoman Davis? Did you have a...
I was just gonna ask. I was just thinking. Andrew, do you have access to the original capital improvement plan that was developed, like, Dave Wosseron?
I know it's out there. I know there was some sort of framework, but I do not have access to it.
Okay. So, we'll have to look for that because at least it'd be... the groundwork was already done. It was already there. So, you know, it may have changed. It's so old compared to what our needs are today, but it'd be worth looking at that document and so not reinventing the wheel, so to speak.
I'm sure we can dig it up and circulate it for the Board to review.
Thank you.
Seeing nothing further, we have a motion to approve the RFP. It has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. You're up again, actually, with a memo regarding the conveyance of 117 State Street, a formerly city-owned property. There's a memo and copy of the development plan for the property on pages 18 to 35 of your packet.
So, some of you may recall, this is a standard procedure for us. So, there's a provision within the deed when we have city-owned properties, when we're conveying it to the grantee, that if... they essentially have to complete the development plan prior to conveying that property further. So, in this case, we have the Reeds and the McCollan-Rickett Properties LLC. So, the Reeds have been unable to complete the development plan and have been looking to convey the property. However, they did not complete their development plan. So, the buyer is... has formally acknowledged that they will finish the development plan. So, in order to convey the property, essentially, the Board of Aldermen needs to approve this conveyance due to that provision.
What is the Board's pleasure? Alderwoman Taddeau?
Motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
All right. So, we have a motion to suspend the rules. It has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And a motion to authorize the sale of 117 State Street from Richard Jr. and Ann Reed to McCollan-Rickett Properties, the second LLC, is presented.
Second.
All right. So, we have a motion to authorize the sale of 117 State. It has been seconded. Alderwoman McCann?
Yeah. Just a question. In your opinion, is this sort of the... in the best interest of the city to allow this to go forward?
Based on what I'm understanding, they're willing to complete the development plan, which is gonna bring more housing units back online. So, you know, it does seem to be consistent with the development plan.
Perfect. Thanks. Did you want to speak to this issue? Welcome.
Oh, gosh. I'm coming alone. Hi. My name's Morgan Blanchard-McCollen. So, here with my mom, I'm Mona Rickett. So, we're the ones that are interested in the properties with Mr. Reed and his family. So, we just had a couple of questions. We did have, and thank you for seeing us today, first of all, on this matter. We had some questions about the property. Obviously, it's our understanding... we just found out that there was a business development plan originally with the city. And so, we are happy to... we'd like to know some information about that. We were just given the business development plan that was actually given to a buyer attorney. So, we were unaware that there was a plan already with the city. We were told that this was, I guess, with just the owner. And so, we just had some questions about that, and if there's... if that's gonna be anything to hold up with, I guess, closing, and if there's anything maybe the city could do with us. There is some substantial work that still needs to be done with this. About 75% of the original business development plan that was made with the city is still outstanding. So, that would be something that we would be taking on, and it's pretty high of a financial burden. So, is there anything that we could work out with the city or that we strictly with the buyer? I guess, is kind of where we're at. Obviously, we think it would be in the best interest of the city to go ahead and allow us to move forward with this sale. But it is a substantial cost to purchase this home, of course, and then substantially high to put in some renovations, about $150,000 worth of renovations on top of a pretty hefty payment to buy this home. So, we just wanted to chat with you guys first before moving forward with that.
So, I think Andrew...
Yeah. Andrew, if you want to speak, too late.
Thank you, and we're sorry that we were just finding out about this.
Yeah, no, so I was contacted, I guess, by the seller's attorney, Bill Blumer, is that the seller's attorney? Okay, so I was contacted by Bill Blumer, who told me that the buyers, yourself, were willing to finish the development plan. Development plan is a little bit vague in term of the work that was supposed to be done. It has overview. They want to add parking to the back of the building, update all five apartments, and, you know, updating all kitchens, baths, floorings, new foundation sections, and make them into better apartments. So from what I understood, the new foundation more or less was in place. I think bathrooms were done and all that was left, no bathrooms. Okay, kitchen, one of them? Okay, so, flooring? No.
Flooring.
Flooring, okay, that's the one that I missed. So the bathrooms and kitchens need to be redone. I was informed that you guys were continuing to go forward with updating the bathrooms and kitchens?
Yeah, there's no, there's no, um, no, actually, it's all good. So in terms, we had a home inspection done by Dutton Smith, so Home Smith LLC, so he was referred to us by David Morris. He came to the home to do a whole, well, home inspection for, to come in with, and as you know, it would be happening in the past. He came in and said, you know, copper, yeah, Mr. Reed is a wonderful developer, he did do. This is before we knew about this development plan. We just found out about the development plan. Our contractors came in for contractors' comments. We had a master electrician, we believe, Mr. Hicks came in and he told us that this still needs to be electrical panels and wiring in the home before considering coming to the city, helping the why. It is a month ago that we did do five apartments, it is, it was quoted for four, we could not do five there. We had Ian Kyte with kind of plumbing coming in to talk about the plumbing and heating. There is absolutely no plumbing and no heating in this facility whatsoever. So you're looking at about $60,000 for that, is what we had to do. We had John Gallo with kitchen counters coming. In order to do the full kitchen and bathrooms, there are no kitchens, there are no bathrooms in these units right now. So they would need substantial $40,000, $50,000 dollars for those. So then we had contractors coming back to our construction as well to say, for the city code as well, you need to have ERAS, you need to have buyers, you need to put into this, you need to update exterior, there's different things to do in order to have that city code. So you're looking at approximately the control end, about 100, a high of 150,000. So we would like to be able to move forward with this. We were unaware of this business development plan until about yesterday. We had our split, we had provided, and then we realized that the city basically made an agreement, I believe five years ago, that said, we will pay you for this property if you're going to do this work. And that's great, except setting my person up to work this amount of time, and now we're, we would like to move forward with this property, quote, that's what I'm asking the city, because there's going to be issues with ERAS, because we are taking on our own deal, and it's kind of a property that's about $14,000, we are the ones that are going to be paying on, $150,000.
So I'm going to interject here. I appreciate your desire to move forward and move quickly with this. Our meetings and our rules of order aren't really set up to have like a conversation about this kind of stuff. So I've let this go far enough afield from our rules, and I'm just trying to rein things back in. It sounds like this kind of stuff is usually worked out at the city-owned properties level committee, where someone comes in with a development review plan, and the city-owned properties committee has a conversation with the person who's proposing to do the plan. It sounds like you were surprised by the plan, that maybe this isn't ready for final approval by the board, that it needs to be referred to city-owned properties where we can have that conversation, come up with a plan that works for everyone, bring it back to this board so that we could approve it. It would, does that sound agreeable to you?
Sure.
I would just add, I apologize, I, you know, it was conveyed by the seller's attorney that, you know, this information had been conveyed. So I was operating under a different set of facts, I guess.
I certainly understand.
What I would add is, you know, this does sound like, you know, it does sound like the buyer is trying to achieve at least the purpose of the, of the original project, so.
So what is the board's preference? Should we, do you prefer to try to modify the plan in this meeting, which seems very difficult to do so and adhere to our rules? Or ask that the maker of the motion to approve rescind the motion, withdraw the motion, and then we refer? Alderwoman Davis, and then Alderwoman McClure.
Just a question, that maybe the buyers, are you still, you're still looking at the purchase process? You just want some clarification on, on the business plan? So, see? Yeah, I think that's part of it. And again, Frank Urso, our attorney, just notified us of this when he was searching the deed. He said, are you aware of this developmental, this development plan, which is supposed to be completed by May of 2019? Of course, COVID hit, we understand the problems they have with contractors, and again, Mr. Reed did a beautiful job on the renovations that he did do. But then our inspector went in and said, whoa, there's a lot that's going to be done here, are you aware? So I think we're willing to move forward with purchasing it. We just need to see, are there some, can the city help, can the seller help to offset all this? Or we've been advised by Frank Urso to just cancel the contract, there's a provision in there, if there were permits that were not divulged to us, which none of this was disclosed to us at the time we saw the property, at the time we did the purchase and sales agreement, there was no mention of a developmental plan, never mind a developmental plan that had a time date on it, and all of these things set forth that should have been done so that the property could be sold. In fact, just the opposite, in the wording, it's saying, this property cannot be sold until these renovations are done. So Frank is like, there's a lot of red flags, back off, get this clarified, and it sounds like you have a good solution, sir, to go to an appropriate meeting for renegotiating, not only with Mr. Reed, but also...
And I realize that's not ideal, you would prefer to finalize things tonight, but I think that we could probably move relatively quickly on convening such a meeting.
Yeah.
Alderwoman Tadio, are you good to withdraw?
I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Is the secondor agreeable? Don't remember who the secondor was? Okay. Can we make a new?
So you want to defer this to the agency?
The city-owned property.
City-owned property committee.
Alderwoman McClure.
I was going to make the motion to defer to the city-owned properties committee, if that required a motion.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to refer to city-owned property. It has been seconded. Any discussion on the referral? Alderbin Gillum?
I just have one concern, and don't take me wrong, but I'm from that neighborhood. I've seen property just sit, 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 and that's not my interest with this property. I would like you to move the boulders away and make sure you can get that property back online.
So any of our properties that we have previously, and we do have them, we've worked with the city multiple times, and we typically go when we renovate and to develop them, and the city can actually confirm that. We go when we renovate, all of our contractors have come previously. So we are interested here, we're interested in taking this, we've started to have our contractors already come in, and if we have everything lined up, we would like to work on this project.
So you're trying to do something within one year, year and a half?
We're looking to have this up and running within like two months.
Okay, okay.
We have it close on the property, obviously, but we had the building inspector, or an inspector come in and tell us all of these, and then separate contractors, electrical, plumbing, roofing, kitchen encounters, bathrooms. So we're ready to go, but this is all we knew, we just found out about this yesterday. So I think we were already on the schedule before we got this information. And actually, Frank Urso was at St. Thomas, the Emilus, he's there. Whoa, stop!
That's fine.
Thank you, guys, we see one here. Thank you so much.
All right, so we have a motion to refer to city-owned property. It has been seconded, seeing nothing further. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And I would just ask that members of the board, if we do want to ask questions of people who are here to speak to items, that we ask them to step to the podium, because Peg TV can't get any audio from people who are speaking outside the rail, so people watching at home.
And Andrew, no contact then?
Yep, I will work on scheduling a city-owned properties committee meeting as soon as possible, those you typically during the daytime. And then any recommendation that comes out of city-owned properties has to come back to this board, so at the very least, it will be two weeks. So I'll try to line something up in the next two weeks.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Treasurer Markowski with the treasurer's report for the city NRA for the period ending January 31st, and this was emailed to board members.
Hi, everyone, I'll be brief. January is seven months in, which is unbelievable, as I'm still working on the audit ending June 30th. So I sent all the material yesterday. Does anyone have specific questions on departments? I don't want to get into a lot of detail tonight. The quarter ends are more meaningful for really detailed review. But I did want to take a little bit of time, I feel like I really pick on the expenses, every department that's over budget, whatever. So did look at the revenues, mainly the, the non-tax revenue. Where are we right now when we look at those things? That would be interest earnings, pilot, clerk's office, building and zoning, rec, all of that stuff that helps to support the budget and keep that tax rate low. So when I looked today, we're seven months and we're about 80%. So we're, you know, timing-wise, you know, maybe we're going to surpass that by quite a bit if, if things keep going, as I see. And you'll see that I do a separate summary of revenue, so if you look at that, that's 80%. So that's really good. A lot of departments with revenues over budget, so I wanted to share that. And RME is kind of, rooms and meals tax is included in the taxes line, that's actually at 72% right now, seven, seven months in, we've had some real strong collections there, so. And I did want to talk a little bit, oh, I created a new fund for the, the local option tax, so you'll see that separate, so that's always going to be separate, so you'll be able to monitor what's in there interest-wise and any spending that we do out of that. Also, I created another fund, not much in it, but that rental rehab, so that we separated that. And I'll create another fund for the grant match, so we can be watching, what did we apply for, how much have we used dedicated to grants? So, but I did want to clarify, although it was collected in February and not part of January, local option tax. So as of the first six months, two quarters reporting, the city collected $814,000. So there was a little bit difference, that first quarter was a little bit bigger than the second quarter. So when you look at the reports from this date, there were a total of 12,236 forms filed, okay? 60% of those were included in the first quarter, 40% in the second quarter. Doesn't usually happen, but just did happen, so that's why you see, we thought, I guess, because of the holiday season, that second quarter was going to be higher, but just looking for a little bit of explanation. So if we stay on that track, I don't know, we don't have any historical data, maybe we'll have 1.6 million at the end of the first year of this, but we'll find out, so. And of the 814,000, we have already set aside 300,000 for pension. And then in the budget process, when you look at the city budget, you see the DPW budget is down, but 586,000 was actually moved over for consideration from the local option tax. So that's one other reason why we need to kind of look at, go back, revisit, how much is going to be pension, how much is going to go to the capital reserve fund, and how much for infrastructure? Because I believe when I speak with the engineers, the 400,000 for paving often isn't enough, so something more to consider, so.
Questions from the board for the treasurer? Seeing none? Thank you, Treasurer Markowski.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, I have a letter of support that I would like the board to consider circulating for signature to support the Rutland Free Libraries application for a U.S. Treasury Capital Projects Fund for Libraries grant. This was emailed to everyone. And Randall is here? Sure, if you'd like to say just a couple of words.
Randall Smithers, Director Rutland Free Library, resident of Kinkleville. So this is just an update on the $16.4 million in federal treasury funds that are being dispersed to libraries statewide. I came to the board in July of last year, and you supported us for $18,000 in preparation for this. We expect it to be highly competitive. The state has refined the details a bit, so there's going to be one grant, at least one grant to every county. The minimum amount they will disperse is 300,000, the maximum is going to be around 1.4 million, and we are going to pursue the maximum available. Grant application is due March 12th, we intend to be ready on March 5. It does require that all five of our supporting towns submit a letter from, from the town or city in this case. We cannot move forward without it. And just a real quick, preliminary architectural drawings are done, they'll be reviewed once the community outreach that was in the Herald is finished. We finished reviews of ADA access, historical preservation Act 250, and energy efficiency, and we're working on hazmat and engineering studies. So it is a major process for us, and I do thank you in advance for your support.
Alderin McCann?
A motion to suspend the rules and take the matter up tonight?
Second.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I would move that we circulate the letter of support for the Rutland Free Libraries application for signature.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to circulate the letter of support for signature. It has been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We'll move on to reports of standing committees. We have Alderwoman Davis with her report from the Finance Committee meeting of February 15th, which was emailed to board members.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the Finance Committee met February 15th. The topics were ARPA funds, pilot, treasurer's report for the last quarter, and the 1% option tax. Members present are Alderman Barber-Gallo, Savage McCann, Adams, and Chairman Davis. Other present were President Talbot, Mayor Dundges, Treasurer Markowski, Assistant Treasurer Homequist, Alderman Gillum, Tadio Kubaly, Recreation Superintendent Peters, Tyler Dolan from Recreation, Fire Chief Belovit, Andrew Strinsky, zoning administrator. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM. The first order business was the discussion of the ARPA funds. The committee had developed a matrix for spending the funds and has been, and the funds have been awarded. Was there any need to keep this issue in committee? As new requests will come to the board, and the board, it would be discussed at the full board level. The treasurer, after some discussion, the treasurer will give us the full board on the funds expended to date, and no action is required. The second order business was the discussion of the pilot, which is payment in lieu of taxes for nonprofits in the city, as there is a demand for police and fire coverage. The state and federal buildings pay pilot, and the committee felt that further discussion was needed due to the large amount of nonprofits and the properties on the tax rolls. So this issue will just remain in committee for further discussion. The third topic was the quarter and treasurer report. The treasurer gave a review of the funds, pool cash is affected by less cash in the water and sewer funds and parking meters. New measures have been put in place, an adjustment to the water sewer bills, Park Mobile for downtown, for example, and we will wait to see what effects these actions will have on these funds. The last discussion was the 1% tax and the board's role in the development of the capital improvement plan, the capital reserve fund, and funding the pension. The fund is estimated to produce approximately $1.6 million in revenue. Andrew gave us an update with a choice for a consultant, which we did this evening. The plan will take up till 2026 to be completed, and the city planning commission and Board of Aldermen will be weighing in on those public hearings. Currently, the 1% has been spent through the budget process. The board consultant, the board and the consultant will need to decide the percent going to each fund and what to fund. Currently, there is a plan in place, and the board will need to revisit it, that's the one I spoke about earlier, that was developed many years ago. This issue will remain in committee and no action is taken, and the meeting adjourned at 6:35 PM.
Very good. Thank you, Alderwoman Davis. Reports of representatives, we have none. Reports of select committees, we have none. Petitions, letters, miscellaneous communications, we have none. Board of Control Commissioners, we have nothing on the agenda. Board of Cannabis Commissioners, we have a request to consider a retail and manufacturers' Tier Two application for Nana's Farms. Copies of the application materials can be found on pages 36 to 42 of your packet. Alderwoman McClure?
Just for procedural questions, do we have to move into the Board of Cannabis Control Commissioners for this discussion?
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion, which has been seconded, to go into the Board of Cannabis Commissioners. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And what is the board's pleasure? Alderwoman McClure?
Is there anyone present to speak on this permit here this evening?
I believe there is. So if you'd like to step up?
Good evening.
Thank you. Could I get your name for the record, sir?
Yes, hi, my name is Fred Polsonelli, and I'm part of the group, Nona VT is our LLC name for this project.
Perfect. Thank you very much for being here tonight, Mr. Polsonelli. My first question, I noticed here that the address is blacked out on this application, and I would just like to ask the question as to why, and ask if you would be able to provide the proposed location.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure why it's blacked out. It's 7-9 West Street.
May I? When I receive an email regarding cannabis, the, one of the things that's strictly is there is that the address needs to be...
Are we unable to ask questions about the address in this, in this forum?
I don't think you're unable to ask about questions, but that's the reason why it's redacted.
Got it.
But I believe there are guidelines on the application there about confidentiality that we are legally required to follow.
State, state law.
Understood, understood. Well, I guess, I guess the question I have then, just to revert back to earlier tonight's discussion, as you were present for, I would just like to confirm, is this in a residential neighborhood? Is this in a commercial neighborhood?
It's in a commercial neighborhood, where we specifically sought after it to be away from residential community. I mean, we want nothing to do with being in a controversial area, so we're in a location where a lot of automobile traffic, nobody living right in the area, and it's really prime for manufacturing jobs.
Perfect, thank you.
Alderwoman Davis?
So, if I may?
Of course.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I'm not sure that you're aware, but I believe the board received a letter of concern that we received today. And I think it makes some justifiable points of concern, and so instead of approving this application this evening, I'd like to send it to the cannabis committee for further discussion.
To, to charter an ordinance?
Well, no, I think we have, well, please correct me if I'm wrong, because this is new territory, but I think we send it to the Board of Cannabis Control Commissioners, similar that we would if it was liquor, if we had a concern with a bar, for example, we would send it to the Board of Control Commissioners, where we would meet as a body.
Don't believe we ever created such a committee.
Okay, so I'm not sure how...
We could send it to general.
Somebody wants to deal with that.
Or committee of the whole, attorney of the chance?
Right, I could send it to committee of the whole, if that works.
So whatever process is generally used for the control commissioners, the same would apply here, it's sort of a similar board, just on a different issue. So whatever our usual process is for that, if it makes more sense because we don't have an official committee created for it, then probably a committee of the whole.
Sure. So normally, when we had, the last time I can recall, having a concern about a liquor license that we wanted to discuss further, it was sent to Special Liquor, so we could send this to committee of the whole to have that discussion.
So I'll rephrase my motion to refer to the committee of the whole.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to refer. It's been seconded. Any discussion from the board? Alderwoman McClure?
I would just like to invite those present to speak on this, to tell us a little bit about their business plan and about their business before we send this to the committee, just so we have the full context outside of that letter of concern we received.
Excellent suggestion.
Thank you again for the opportunity. I was unaware of the letter of concern. I mean, I've personally worked in the medical cannabis industry for many years, and we're specifically seeking a manufacturing and retail, two separate licenses at this location, because we feel like we could bring much-needed jobs to the area. And what's good about our manufacturing is we're not growing. You know, I know there are some concerns over growing, especially in particular areas around smell and accessibility to children and whatnot. We're buying products from the farmer, so we're going to work with the licensed suppliers here in Vermont to buy their flour and distillate and procure edible products, gummies, things like that. You know, our manufacturing is like five different crockpots, like you would see at home, and we purchase the distillate from the licensed processors, and then there's a process where we heat it up and infuse it into, you know, gummy... a process where we heat it up and infuse it into, you know, gummy-type molds and things like that. So it's, there's no extraction, there's no heavy machinery, it's really not like that at all. We think we could put about 40 people to work, and this project's many years in the making. It's a very large facility, but we wanted to make the investment, and we've built out the site, and it's been vacant since 2018, and, you know, we're ready to go, and we've got our heart and soul and capital into this, and, you know, we want to be here to stay for sure. But I just want to answer any questions. I was unaware that the address was blacked out, of course, but I'm here to be as transparent as possible. I mean, we really have quite a bit wrapped up in this, so if there are any concerns whatsoever, you know, we just want to address them and give you straight answers.
Very good. Alderwoman Kupali, and then Alderwoman McCann?
Yeah, thank you for being here this evening. Have you, are you purchasing this property, or are you leasing the property?
Right now, we're leasing it, and we're going to continue to lease it for a little while, but we would like to, you know, engage in a purchase at some point. I mean, we're here for the long haul. But right now, we're under lease. We've been, we've been under lease.
Very good. Alderwoman McCann?
Just to address the comment that was shared with the whole board that Alderwoman Davis brought up, and for the people at home, a concern has been raised and shared with the entire board by some members of the community, in particular those who stand to be harmed by the approval of these licenses, that the business practices of Nona Vermont LLC's Colorado-based principal are likely to go beyond creating a competitive local market for cannabis. Instead, there are fears that the financial backing and supporting of Nona VT LLC would allow them to severely undercut our local business owners with the intent of buying them up, monopolizing the local market, and leaving a uniform uncompetitive and potentially low-quality market for local customers. Part of this concern is supported by the request for both retail and manufacturing licenses. Only one of our current cannabis dispensaries similarly has both retail and manufacturing. So it appears to me that the licensing being requested tonight has the potential to have a much larger impact on the local economy than prior applications, and I think that we've got 60 days in which to grant or deny the applications, and I think we received the application on January 8th. It seemed like that's what came from the clerk, which I think gives us till March 8th. So I think we've got some time, and I agree that sending it to an additional committee for discussion, giving, you know, members of our community currently to make sure they're fully informed and bring any concerns, and then for the applicants as well, to make sure that they can bring, you know, their side of the story to the discussion as well.
Can I speak to any of that at this point?
Absolutely.
I, thank you. I think I heard you say something about capital backing and being bad for the community. That's not, we're mom-and-pop operators, we're all putting our own money into this, and there's a very small team, and the reason why we specifically want to be in the manufacturing business, we're going to support all of the retailers. We've been speaking to the local retailers. I think the market here in Vermont is in need of more products, and we're here to curate those products and provide them to the stores. So we're partnering with retailers, and we're also partnering with farmers where we're, you know, buying the product from them, so I'm not, I just, I haven't heard anything like that, and nobody certainly brought that up to me. I can tell you, there is no big financial backing. We're not backed by some bank or family office or an MSL. We're locals, and we've got everything riding on this. So this is in no way a situation where there's some big out-of-state money coming in or whatever people may be raising, but we can certainly answer any question directly, especially to that. I just, I can't understand where that assumption would come from. Nobody's ever spoken with us about that, and that's the furthest from the truth there could possibly be. With every month that goes by where we're unable to open, we're really in a rough spot. You know, our back is severely against the wall at this point, so. But anybody who brings something like that to your attention, we'd love to address it. It's just, when it comes to our application with the state, everything is laid out, who the partners are, what the equity is, who put what in, so there are no surprises here at all. I just, I can't, I'm a bit taken back by that.
Yeah, thanks for that. Yeah, sorry to share that with you this morning.
No, I, yeah.
No, I think it's important that Alder McCann shared it, and that it's important that we refer this to committee of the whole, have that meeting, give members of the community an opportunity to weigh in before we move forward. So I, you know, if they vote for the referral, I'll aim to schedule the meeting sometime next week, so that we could bring this back before the board, before the March 8 deadline.
Thank you.
So we have a motion to refer to committee of the whole. It has been seconded. Any further discussion on the referral? Alderwoman McClure?
I just wanted to confirm, as far as I am aware, is there a chair to committee of the whole? And, oh, is it you? Perfect. So I have no doubt then that you will contact Mr. Polsonelli and make him aware. Perfect. That was my question. I wasn't sure if there was a specific chair that wasn't you.
It's an automatic chair.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Any further debate? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So, does the clerk have your contact information?
Yep, Tracy and I are in regular, regular contact.
Okay, so I'll reach out in the next two days about when we're going to have this meeting.
Thank you, thank you very much. And again, like, I know people raise concerns, and we will address them all, no matter what they are, straight answers, transparent, so just very grateful for this.
And thank you for your patience.
Of course, thank you. Thank you.
All right. Can I get a motion to go out of Board of Cannabis Commissioners?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of going out of Board of Cannabis Commissioners?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to unfinished business. Seeing none? We'll move on to miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business. Alderwoman Tadio?
Yes, I would like to make a referral, and I think probably to Public Works, not exactly sure, so would leave that up for discussion here. But basically, we need to have a discussion about the notification process for water alerts for Board of Aldermen abatement requests. There's concern that people don't necessarily, the email alert isn't really sufficient to let people know how much money their water is actually costing, and so both in the interest of trying to, we'll help both ends, help customers not spend too much on their water, help us not waste water, and then also help have to prevent these Board of Aldermen abatement meetings. Yeah, I would like to refer this, and I think to Public Works.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to refer the Water Smart notifications and how we might improve them to Public Works. It has been seconded. Any discussion on the referral? Mayor Dungeons?
So, I mean, this is, but in this case, I think it's actually a good idea. I just want to give you an update before you send this. After, not the most recent tax abatement meeting, because I wasn't there, but the previous one, I did start working with DPW on modifying the policy on how those notifications should work, how we can process things before they get to tax abatement, maybe kind of go back and look at what we used to do versus where we're at today through the process. So if there's something that you would like me to bring to committee along with that modification, please let me know in advance, so that I can make sure that's taken care of.
I just want to respond. Yeah, I would like that after that email is sent, within five business days, DPW calls the person who's having that alert and tries to get through, and also, I would like for the alert to say X amount of water equals X amount of dollars.
Got it.
I just don't think that people, gallons don't equate to dollars for somebody, and so if they see, oh, that's going to be $1,000, then they're going to call the plumber and not just change a faucet themselves.
Great, so I will...
Or the city, because I think one woman, if I may, I'm sorry, if one woman spoke about how she wasn't aware, just call the city. Just call DPW and say, I got this notice, now what do I do? Who can help me? Because someone can come out from the city as well.
Yeah. Do you mind if I respond? Great, thank you. So yes, I think there's an option of both, right? You can reach out to us always, you can always have a call and ask that question even today, but I can certainly put that in our draft and talk to, I'll talk to our DPW commissioner and our business manager, make sure that we bring that to the table as a potential option and see if that'll work. I don't see why we couldn't do that. That seems very reasonable, so.
Very good.
But I'll still send it to committee.
All right, so we have a motion to refer this issue to Public Works. It's been seconded, seeing no further debate. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Any additional miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business? Alderwoman Barber Gallo?
I received a call today from Bob Provansky from the Department of Public Works informing me that I believe most or all of the new meters have been installed. There is still work to be done on the kiosks, and I would like to hold a parking committee meeting to discuss this, to see what still remains, what needs to be done. I believe there's some language that needs to be addressed because of Park Mobile coming into play, and I would like to refer this to the parking committee.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to refer this matter to the parking committee. It's been seconded. Any discussion on the referral? Alderwoman McCann?
Could I ask that we specifically request and sort of an update on how Park Mobile's been going and the financials of it so far?
That was my plan, to get information as to how much revenue is coming in from Park Mobile. He had mentioned that we need to address the fact that we need to unload the meters more, because we're gaining more coins now, and they're filling up faster, so we need to, you know, it's a, it's a good situation to begin, but we just need to empty them out further, so that they do not break down.
Alderwoman McClure?
Alderman Barber Gallo answered my question. I was going to ask that revenue be included in that update.
My only request is that you wait until we schedule the committee of the whole and the city-owned properties committee, because there are only a few available evenings between now and our next meeting, because those are both important.
I will hold off until I hear from you.
Very good, thanks. All those in favor of the referral to parking committee?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Any additional miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business? Alderwoman McClure?
I would just like to say to all those who are running for office this year, and all of those who are incumbents or new, I wish you the best of luck on town meeting day.
We've got one more meeting before that.
Do we really? Oh, gosh, I lost count. I checked the calendar.
But it's not televised.
Oh, okay, see, that makes it better. That makes it okay.
All right, so we need to go into an executive session. Do you have the language for us?
I do. At this point in time, I would like to make a motion to find that premature general public knowledge regarding city attorney's analysis of a legal matter would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage, because the discussion will include confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the city.
So moved. Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And we need a motion to enter into executive session with the inclusion of the mayor, the treasurer, clerk, and city attorney. Anyone else?
Nope, I think that's everybody.
All right, to discuss the city attorney's analysis of a legal matter as allowed under Title I, Section 313A1F, and that was already moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.